Good morning, everyone. I would like to welcome the members of council, staff, and members of the public to our special meeting of council to review the 2025 draft budget and call this meeting to order. I would also like to remind council that this meeting will be recorded. I'd like to ask Mrs. Pearson, please, for the Indigenous land acknowledgement, please.
Thank you. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral lands of the Chipewa, the Odoa, and the Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Unishna Bank. The town of Petrolia is located on the land associated with Huron Track Treaty Number 29 of 1827. We express gratitude for the land where we live, work, and play, and we are committed to working respectfully with the land and the Indigenous peoples who have called this land home.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson, and I'd like to ask at this time that you perform the roll call, please.
Councillor Clark.
Present.
Councillor Hyatt.
Present.
Councillor O'Hara.
Present.
Councillor Patel.
Present.
Councillor Welsh.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Field.
Present.
Mayor Loosley.
Present.
We do have your worship.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to request that council declare a conflict of interest now or at the appropriate time and fill out the necessary paperwork. They seeing none, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda. I just want to review again as outlined before you. We'll have a break at 10:00 to 10:20, lunch from 12:00 to 12:30, and again, 2:00 to 2:20 for a break. Now, we have a motion to adopt the agenda before you. I'd like to move in a second to put that on the floor. Move by Councillor Clark, seconded by Deputy Mayor Field. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that is for the agenda to be approved as circulated for the November 27, 2024 Draft 2025 Budget Session.
Any questions from council? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of approving that motion? Opposed? That motion carries. Now, there are no previous minutes to be considered. That'll move us on now to number seven, the proposed 2025 water rate. And I'll ask for a move in a second to put that motion on the floor, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Charlebois for his report. I'll need a move in a second to put that motion on the floor. Move by Councillor Welsh, seconded by Councillor O'Hara. I'll ask the clerk to read that motion, please.
And that motion will be for the council, the town of Petrolia, to approve as presented the 2025 water rates.
And before we vote, I'll ask Mr. Charlebois, CAO Treasurer, for his report, please.
Thank you through your worship. Could I have the second slide, please? Thank you. So based, we did a presentation back on the 28th of October, public presentation, and from that session, we had a recommendation from some public feedback, and they recommended that we change our fixed water rate from $10.53 to $15 per month. So we've incorporated that into our budget, and that will help greatly with taking some of the financial pressure off of our water system. As most, as council knows, the water treatment plant intake at Brights Grove, we have to pay about $4 million of that $16 million project. So in today's presentation for the water budget, the $15 per month for the fixed part is included in our, the information that you have. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Charlebois. Any questions regarding that report? Okay, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Councillor Hyatt.
Are we going to discuss water rates further in the budget meeting today? And this is just a preliminary overview of what the change was?
Yeah, I think we're just discussing that $15 flat rate is the main thing today. We will be discussing the other in detail because I have some questions, too.
May I clarify for Councillor Hyatt?
Sure.
So the motion is to approve that slide in front of you as it has been presented?
So we're approving the $15 fixed rate increase at this moment in time, or that will be discussed further?
No, we're approving the $15 now. That'll be, that'll be in place. So that's open for discussion now.
But I think the discussion needs to be the grander. You're looking at variable and fixed, right? So like if we approve fixed now, will we discuss fixed again when we're also looking at variable?
But I think the idea was to approve the $15 and we'll discuss the others, the variables and the others at that time. Am I making that kind of clear? Because I have some concerns about the, we have, there's a $15 an hour, and there's so much if you're outside the municipality, there's a small difference to like Mettaview Villa, and there's one, there's one for Mettaview Villa, and there's one for just outside of the municipality, was 1548 or something? That one, that one we can discuss later, but the, right now, for the local residents in Petrolia, we're moving that $10 was going to be like a 3% increase. We're just going to move it up to a flat 15 because I think some of the other areas, and I think Sarnie was an example, where their base rate was like $40. So some were an approximate. I don't want to hold you to that, but we just thought that's, and after we met with that public meeting, the idea of we're going to need some additional money for that new water line going out into the lake. Deputy Mayor Field.
Yeah, through you. So is there a reason that we have to do this right now? Could we not furthest till after we discuss the whole?
Yeah, we could. If, if, if the move in a second is okay.
The questions, because some of the questions are going to cross over, so.
All right, so is the move in a second, you're okay with that? So we'll hold on that. We'll discuss it later on. All right. Thank you. So moving on, that will take us to my comments. I'm going to have my comments first, and bear with me. I, I always put a little bit of thought into this, but I think I can give council a copy later on, or I'll at least give it to the clerk, because he has it as well. I'd like to welcome council staff and especially residents to our budget deliberations for 2025. This is an important day with a lot to absorb, to work as a team in a professional and courteous manner. It has been another busy year, and I'd like to thank Mr. Charlebois, CAO Treasurer and staff for preparing the 2025 budget. Council will have seen that staff are recommending a 3% increase to our municipal rate that I am very pleased with, and 2.5% to our water rates, 3% to our sewer rates, and that still includes a number of major projects within our town. Even though our economy is still recovering, there is still much to do. We need to remain flexible. To report our economic recovery, there has also been much discussion by our provincial and federal governments on new capital grant programs to help municipalities. The town of Petrolia is well-prepared with shovel-ready projects to respond to any new grant programs that are introduced, and I feel that, in my opinion, the town is blessed with some new assessment growth this year, even though development has slowed down. The town is projecting it coming in with a small surplus at the end of 2024. And for your information, a 1% mill rate or a 1% increase in municipal taxes is approximately $66,000. So for every percent change, you got to look at $66,000. With the increase in assessment dollars, any new development next year will result in an increase in revenue plus the 3% increase. I am very pleased that no new planned debentures are proposed and that our debt is being reduced from 5.8 million to 5.2 million by the end of 2025, with two debentures maturing this year. For council information, our debt was over $10 million six years ago, and our capital spending in 2025 this year is almost $7 million with the budget before you today. I will go through each budget and will ask council to raise your hands for any questions, changes, or clarification as we go. It is very important for council to be aware of what we will be approving today. Please remember the figures we see are up until the end of October, with still a number of bills to come in for the next two months. Also, please note that this is the municipal portion of your taxes and does not include the county or Board of Education. Any cuts or additions agreed upon will be approved by a motion of council at the time and a motion at the end as amended to approve the budget. Now, I'd like to turn the meeting over to our CAO Treasurer to take us through our draft budget and any opening comments he may have.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask one question before?
There you can.
You mentioned the end of October for those figures. It's the end of September throughout the document. Is that correct?
Okay, thank you. I'll make that correction. So just, I think the reason for that is so you understand if the budget, if the numbers are a bit low, then we still have October, November, December to come here. It's okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Okay, Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you through your worship. Just to add on to the year-to-date expenditures, the mayor's right, technically it's to the end of December, but actually, a bunch of the bills won't come in until January, February, sometimes even March. That'll be applied to the previous fiscal year because that's where the expenditure occurred. Just a few opening comments. Agenda number one, encourage council to ask as many questions and comments you may have throughout the process, full transparency. So we've got the presentation here in front of us, and we also have our deputy treasurer, Annette. Annette is, has her Excel spreadsheet. So right now, we've got information back to 2013 by general ledger account, and that's as detailed as we get unless we want to break into the actual invoices downstairs. And that would be, that would, so we have full transparency. Team sport. Just like to thank the senior management team for all their work over the past several months to put our draft budget together, and it is a team sport in terms of we've taken an integrated management approach to our budgeting process like we do to a lot of our key decisions in that there's very few things that actually just affect one, one of the directors. Most things affect two or more directors, and we cover that when we do all our budget discussions. What's seen in front of you is the best advice of staff. And so what's in there is we've thought through, and we listen to council throughout the year, listen to, we get to the public, we get to see what we need. We have other special experts that help us, for example, for the roads. Every four years or so, we have a roads needs assessment done. Actually, I have one, it's in the budget this year for next spring, early summer, to update our roads needs assessment and prioritize our road work. Strategic plan highlights. Can I have the next slide, please? Yeah, so the, I really like this, this expression here, this quote, like the annual budget, as I've said a few times, is, to me, it's council's short-term strategic plan. It's giving direction and guidance to staff on what council would like to see done over the next year. Our next slide, please. There's a few slides here. So council, as you know, you developed and approved your Petrolia strategic plan for 2024, 2028, and I've got information in there that council has seen. So unless there's any questions, we skip to slide nine, please. Questions, all, and comments on the strategic plan?
No questions for Mr. Charlebois, okay? Carry on, Mr. Charlebois.
Next up on slide nine, it's our Scotiabank Committee. Mayor appointed a Scotiabank Committee several months ago. The chair is the Deputy Mayor Field, and we've met several times over the past few months and have put together a report. The report was included with your package, your budget package, and just like to turn it over to the Deputy Mayor if he wants to add a few comments. What you see in front of you are the recommendations from the report.
Just before we turn it over to Deputy Mayor Field, I just want to mention, I want to thank the committee for bringing this report to council. There's the two options. There's the one there, and there's one at the back, but I want to thank him for the work. I know it's taken a little longer than what we'd hoped, but I'm pleased with the options, and I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Field, please.
Yeah, thank you. The one thing that I think we said right from the beginning with the 150 year and everything that was going on, that it wasn't going to be fast. I think staff have been pulled every which way, and I do appreciate the staff input, the committee input, and we went through several walkthroughs of the building. There are some issues that needed to be addressed with the IT from Scotia, moving some servers and some networking stuff out. We've had HVAC take a look at the separation because one of the proposals is that a wall go through the middle. The, the report outlines it pretty clearly that there's two options, that there's two spaces that we feel that can be utilized. The first option being that we rent both sections out, we put a divider, and that we have two rentals. The second option is that we put a wall up, put a washroom in, and use the back portion of it for a meeting area, an archives area, basically displaying Petrolia. It's, it's thought that if there's a large conference room table, service groups, organizations, our own-town committees could use this room for, for, for a meeting area, but at the same time, we display the artifacts that we have in closets in this building, in closets in people's homes. They could be put up and utilized as well. There's no recommendation for staff to staff it. We feel that if there's a group or organization that come in that can be signed out like any other building, the way the Kerr Building is being utilized. I think there's definitely a meeting area that could definitely be a benefit to us. It's, the overall opinion of the committee is recommending number two, as Rick has pointed out there. Just my personal opinion is, you know, I think we don't need to just be a landlord on the main drag. I believe in the 150 year where we've dug through closets and found so many articles to be on display for our 150, we could actually do that. We do it very well in this building with just simple display cabinets and displaying what Petrolia is all about, and we can do it in a professional way. I don't think in an expensive way where, you know, we could have a committee to take a look at the arena, that could take a look at big bands, we can take a look at figure skating, we can take a look at the oil. You know, there could be displays for, for discovery, the same way discovery has, as items. But I think that this is sort of the way, and I'm not, I'm speaking for myself and the general consensus of the committee. We're definitely open to discussions when it comes up through the budget, but there is some, some cost, basically putting a washroom and a wall in is about $50,000. The HVAC is about five, and replacing the door, there is some work that needs to be done at the front as well for a door going into the Scotia, which was part of the, the purchase agreement that Scotia would still have a room there. So I feel that we, we're, we have a good presentation for one storefront that'll be ready to go. We haven't recommended ripping any walls down because we don't know who that person is that's coming in for it. I think there is a general push through the, the open house that we had for this type of plan. There's definitely comments from the business sector that they would like it to be a business that's going to benefit the main street, not just office space. There was a lot of comments through there for that, but I think we're, we're open to renting the front, have revenue come in, but at the same time, for a very small fee, we could, we can have an archives. And I, I keep trying to not say the M-word because we, it's not going to be that. I think it's a multipurpose room. It's a Petrolia room, and it could really display what we've done with, you know, similar work that's on the walls in, in this building. So that's the overview from the committee. I, I don't know if we just talk about it when it comes up in the regular line.
I'm wondering if council, before we put a motion on the floor or move on this.
Oh, sure. Well. Oh, that's great. There is a, a floor plan which shows where the washroom is. We did have, we brought a resident in that is familiar with plumbing and some renovations and determined that we could put a washroom there very inexpensively. $50,000 is a lot, but we've seen what washrooms have cost in other buildings, and when we have an opportunity for a $50,000 washroom, I, I bet you the fire department wishes that we had done it then, so. And then the dividing wall, the HVAC is right where that, at the bottom of that, that's where the fresh air vent is, and it would have to be split, leaving in the back section a large open area for a conference room, having a safe in the back section is the dry storage that artifacts could be put in. And, you know, I think as we move forward, if we take option two, I think a committee of the organizations and the people that could do some of the displays should be formed, and, and having that input from, from Heritage or for Minor Hockey, any of the different organizations that could be a contributor to it. If there's any questions, you know.
So there are more slides as well for the presentation?
No, just the two.
Just the two.
Yeah.
But there is two options, and that would be taking the front as a rental or taking, and then taking the back as a rental as well. There is a crash bar option that would be the second escape. There could be some additional renovations that would be required if the second is a full rental as well, because I don't think you can really crash bar into another store where we have a town-owned facility at the back. That might be more of an option for us.
And there is a motion, your worship, actually, that was provided to council. I'm not waiting for the adoption as business case number two is presented. So that is a current motion at this agenda point, Port?
I wonder, Mrs. Pearson, if we should even incorporate, I know it's as presented, we should even list that it be, that they take the option two.
It is, your worship, that was, that, that is in this motion here. As council had the option to decide, that was through the recommendation
Okay.
of, of the first slide there. Just could you just flip back to the first slide if it's not too? Yeah, so approve the second option, a multi-use.
Okay. And I'm concerned about the idea of to proceed with the implementation. I wonder if council would like to review the budget at this time and do the budget with this motion at once. I'm just asking what you think of that, because I, I read this proceeding, but we haven't really approved the $50,000.
And I thought the same way, we just deferred the last one. I feel that this should be deferred to the end as well.
Okay.
We'll have to take questions now or later when we, it does come up, so.
Well, I'll just, I'll just see if there's any questions regarding your report, Deputy Mayor Field, and then we will deal with it later. There's no move or second. We haven't put this on the floor yet, so. Councillor O'Hara, go ahead.
Through your worship, is this going to be a, a shared HVAC system? And so the town, if we go with the town space and that, then we would be paying the utilities, right?
Yeah, I think, to answer your question, I believe so, because it is a shared, it's the fresh air return, so we would be paying the utilities, so that would have to be included as part of the rental in the front. So there would be, yes, the answer's.
It'd be.
I don't think we could put a, a full second HVAC system.
No, I agree. So we would be responsible for the utilities, the town of Petrolia.
Yes.
So the, whoever was renting from us.
Later on.
It would be included.
It would definitely be a thought as we rent out what we're renting to.
And now, I just looked at this really quick. Is there one washroom or two washrooms going in?
Front half has access to a washroom, that if it's a store, there is washrooms, but they're, they're not accessible to the public. The back, having it as a town function or a rental, there, we needed to pull one washroom in. There was discussion at one point that putting a washroom each way, but there is washrooms within the stairwell. The second floor has washrooms and a lunchroom. So the front could have access to washrooms for staff. They just wouldn't have access to public washrooms for.
Okay.
Okay, Councillor O'Hara. All right. Any other questions regarding the report? Councillor Patel.
Thank you through you. Prior to finalizing the purchase, was there anyone that approached us as far as looking at this as a rental or a business or a potential future site for their incoming business or extending their business?
I can speak to that if you wish. Yes, I have received a call for an interested, like a service organization that would be interested in renting that facility.
And, and in addition, so the process of renting this front, if that is what the decision is, what does the process look like? Is it like open to anyone, or are, is it going to be a little bit more specific based on what the back half is going to be used as?
As far as I know, I would think it would be open, but I'll ask Deputy Mayor Field if he'd like to answer that. I don't think there's any restrictions that I'm aware of.
No, I don't think there's any restrictions. I think the, the front half restricts itself to, I don't see having the ability to put a restaurant in there that's not going to have what's, what's required, including washrooms. So there will be some limitations with what is in the front, but go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Go ahead, or CAO Treasurer, Mr. Charlebois, go ahead.
State Treasurer.
Give me your glasses.
Yeah. Just through your worship, the only restriction we have, Councillor Patel, is, as part of the agreement with Scotiabank, is that whoever we end up renting it out to, we need to seek their approval ahead of time, but the committee was fully aware of that, and everything we've envisioned here, I don't think Scotiabank would have any hesitation.
I, I think the main thing was it couldn't be another bank, and there are certain things like that we could not lease it to. Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
So yeah, just to highlight what Rick said, there will be a requirement for a security company to service the ATM, so they would actually access the front of it. So that would have to be written into the agreement that, and making sure that it's, it's a business that would be appropriate to have.
Councillor Patel.
Thank you. Just one more question. So has there been any conversations or approaching any of our healthcare on any level that this could be an extension for senior or youth hub or anything like that to, as a community space that would be an extension of what we already have more than a retail space?
Thank you, Councillor Patel. I think there was a number of issues, but I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Field, see if he can answer that.
Thank you.
Yeah, the community space, I think the main emphasis was taking a look at, at the back. So no, we haven't reached out to community organizations, but I think if there's a community organization that wanted to put something like that in the front, I think it would have the ability. I think there has been different organizations that have talked to us regarding office space, but I, I think there were some restrictions of what they would need, and it wouldn't really accommodate everything that they were, they were looking for. So I, I think, you know, definitely open to any organization that, that would come forward with a good business plan for the front, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field. Any other questions from council? Okay, I think we'll move on then, and again, that will be dealt with when we get to the budget portion. Okay, Mr. Charlebois, you want to continue on, please?
Thank you, your worship. Agenda item number three, what I call the bottom line, draft bottom line for rates. Next slide, please. This is just some history of our rates since back to 2019, is the actual rates that we implemented. And next slide. That's for 2025, so municipal tax rate recommending 3% increase, water 2.5% plus the $15 per month for the fixed rate, and sewer 3%, and we don't have a fixed rate for sewer. The, just wanted to note that for the sewer rates in 2017, we went down 5%, 2018 down 10, and 2019 down by five. The CPI for 2023 was almost 4%. And the CPI for 2022, the 40-year high was at 6.8% because of the COVID impacts. Next slide, please. And next, so some background, financial background information. Next slide, please. And next, some background, financial background information, next slide, please. This here is just our, our process, we have a very mature, where I consider very mature and good budget process. This shows all the steps, your annual, it takes more than a year to do the process, but our budget process. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, if not, move to slide 19, please. Thank you, our long-term capital and financial plan, council's familiar with this. Just wanted to highlight the asset management planning, Ontario Regulation 588 of 2017, so it's basically regulation or law. So we've done the first three things we, or two things, I guess, that we had to do. And then what's due by 1 July 2025, we received a, a grant on that, it's actually, as opposed to money, it's actually a number of consulting hours, and we'll use that to satisfy the requirements that are due the 1st of July 2025, and we'll be coming back to council with that in the summer. Hey, thank you. Next slide, the next slide, and I'll just highlight a few points, because council's seen this a few times. And we update it all the time, it's a summary of our grants. First section is grant that were approved, and then if we can turn to slide 26, please. That's it, so the, it's a federal-only grant, it's called the Housing Accelerator Fund. We applied for the first release of this grant, we were not successful. There's now, they were, the Fed's federal government released a second intake, we've applied for that. And we're supposed to know by Christmas, January, and hopefully we get that one, that's a hefty grant. Find out shortly, next slide, please. The Housing Enabling Water Systems Fund, that's a provincial grant. There again, we applied for the first round, didn't get the first round. And we've, and they came up with the second round, and we've applied for that, and that one as well, hopefully we hear within the next couple of months. And if we go to slide 28, please. The Cultural Spaces Fund, these are anticipated, paided grant programs. Council's fully aware of the renovations for Victoria Hall to assist with the V P P, our washrooms and elevator challenges, accessibility challenges. So we're keeping our eyes open for grants there. The bottom one on the page there, brand new one that just came out. Thanks again, Counselor Welsh, we were looking for that one. Counselor Welsh actually saw it before we saw it, and actually, I still haven't gotten official notice from anybody about it, but thank you, I don't know why. Yeah, it's funny, but it's good, might be a good thing for us. So we're just started to put that all together to apply for that, that grant. And any questions at all on grants? Yeah, grants take a lot of work, very important, as I've mentioned a couple of times, the way the, this tax system is set up. Feds have all the money, province not too bad, and municipalities, we, we need capital grants to maintain our infrastructure and to, especially to replace it. The province only gets about 8% of all the tax monies that are received, our big chunk is the property taxes. So there's, and we have about 65% of the public infrastructure, so municipalities are, except for unless you're sitting on a gold mine, we really need the federal and provincial grants to get things done. And we've been very successful on grants the last 10 years or so. Okay, next slide, please.
Just before we go on, I just want to mention, I want to thank you again, Rick and staff, because I know council has already read this, but there's a lot of detail, and it just shows all the things we're still going after to help reduce the cost to the taxpayer. So thank you for that, Rick, carry on.
I have one question too.
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
What percentage of these do you think we're going to use the grant writing service for, like other than, Mr. Charlebot?
Yep, good question, and thanks again to council to help us keep, stay competitive. The grants, I've seen about 11 years worth of grants, I guess, the grants have gotten, they were complicated back 11 years ago. And I used to be on the other end at the federal side and different federal departments, like giving money away. And we tried to streamline, we tried to streamline our process as much as possible for potential grant recipients. But the, at the provincial level especially, it's, they've been getting more and more complicated, even some of the federal ones. So a lot of municipalities, especially the medium, the smaller ones, have switched to grant writers. We, we haven't done that until recently, and we just applied for the one grant that we came to council for. There it is, Community Sport and Recreation Infrastructure Fund on page 27, that's the only one we've used a grant writer for.
Are you forecasting for some of the other grants that you would use the grant writing service or?
To take, we, we're going to, we'd use it very strategically, as we said at council, we would only use it where we needed to. And like, we'd take a look at the cost benefit, like this, this grant here was very complicated. We knew our chance of success on the first round was, oh, the one, it's probably, it's probably really low. There's only $200 million for the whole province, which sounds like a lot of money, but it's, it's not. Because there's, it can get up to maximum of 10 million on one stream, and the, there's 440 municipalities, and divide that by 10 million each, 200 million won't last very long. And almost every municipality I've ever talked to in the last couple of months has applied.
We're also competing against the larger centers too. So their request would be for millions more than what we would be asking for. Any other questions for Mr. Charlebot? And again, as I say, I'm sure council's already read that, I think it's great to have for, for all of our information. Okay, Mr. Charlebot, carry on, please.
Thank you, next, there it is, thank you, just, just shows our internal annual deficit. So you can see our year-end performance there. The next slide is the external one, and that's the big difference between accrual accounting, which we have to do by law, and that's our annual external financial reporting state, statement is used as that. We use the internal one to manage and to approve our budget. Next slide, please. The slide here is our annual surplus deficit accumulated, and the note up top there, growth in our net worth from 2013 to 2023 was 74%. The average growth across all municipalities in the province was 31, so our growth is 240% higher than the provincial average. And this is a good slide to take a look at, to tell it in municipalities, but to take any organization to see if they're investing in their infrastructure. And as you know, the vast majority of municipalities are very capital intense, very asset-heavy organizations, and we need those assets such as all our water system assets to provide safe drinking water, otherwise we just can't provide the services that we provide. Next slide, please. This is our working capital reserve, this is what we use to pay for the non-water, non-sewer capital. So we're, we're in a good spot for the last four, five, six years. Next slide, please. There are grant approvals. Like I've mentioned before, we've been very successful, like the big grant, grant years make the other ones look pretty small, but, but they're not small. But the, in 20, well, hopefully, and then the next few months, we'll get some really good news, because we've applied for some major grants. It's taken a lot of energy from, especially your management team over the last eight months, I'd say. But we're hopefully going to bring some good news back to council. Okay, next slide, yeah, this is a, this slide here is quite important, revealing, so from 2015 to 2022, Petrolia's received more capital grant approvals, 43 million, than tax revenue over the same period. This demonstrates the importance that we just talked about of applying for these capital grants, takes a lot of energy off of staff. But in big picture, if you don't apply for these capital grants, you're not going to be able to do much at your municipality unless you're just naturally rich, which some municipalities are, but not many. Okay, next slide, please. Here's our long-term debt, so this is, I'm projecting this out to the end of December, so the end of this year, 2024. Our grant, our loans are on the left-hand side, the lender is, the amount of the original loans, we, original loans all added up to almost 12 million. The start of this year, we had 6.5 million outstanding debt, at the end of this year, we'll have 5.8, as the mayor mentioned. And at the end of next year, we'll have 5.2, 5.3 million. And that shows the outstanding balance for the next several years.
And if I can, Mr. Charlotte, it also shows the two that will be paid off, that will come off in 2024 on the top. Which is good news.
Yeah. So for loan policy, borrowing generally isn't, isn't a good thing, but it might be borrowed strategically, like we borrowed money to enable some of our large grants, because we didn't have the money to pay for our share of the project, that, the two prod, two of the big projects. But we've tried to stay away from loans as much as we can, and the next slide, please. What this slide here just shows the next four years, and how much our loan payments are. So you can see in, let me see, 2026, we'll have one, two, three, four, five smaller loans that will have been paid off in 2025. Yeah, and then by like 2028, they're all paid off except for our major water and sewer grants. And they go to 2037, and that's the amounts per year, interest and principal.
And if I could just jump into Mr. Charlebot, and for council's information at 2028, that's great news for the corporation to have those paid off. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Charlebot.
Thank you, next, next slide, please. So here's our reserve balances as of the end of '23, the last external audit that we've had. So working capital, almost 3 million, the budget stabilization, let's, the mayor mentioned, and that's still true, is we're expecting a small surplus by the end of 2024. However, if we didn't get us, say we had a small deficit of, say, 100,000, we would come to council rather than, because we can't go in the hole. That's by law, we have to always be small, be a positive. So we'd go to council and say, because it comes off the following year, instead of doing that, we'd say, let's use our, recommend that we use our budget stabilization reserve to pay that off if we're short $100,000. That's what that is therefore, it's a, it's a pretty standard risk management mitigation strategy by most municipalities. Other cultural, that's mainly the V P P, as we mentioned earlier, the V P P saving for a, a major renovation project with the elevators, washrooms, and that's, that's their money there. And then the sewer, or as of the end of 2023, was 133,000 in the reserve, which is kind of low. And waterworks, almost 2 million, and that's to help pay for, so we won't have to take out a loan hopefully for our intake. We have to pay 4 million of the 16 million for that project.
Mr. Charlebot, just for clarification on the fire equipment, that reserve is just, is that just Petrolia's or is that Petrolia and Innes Gellin?
Uh, just ours.
Thank you.
Question?
Oh, go ahead.
They're, understanding that mo- most of the stuff is funded from the working capital reserve, why do we keep all the little small reserve funds as opposed to just merging it into working and capital reserve?
I'll ask Mr. Charlebot to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, good question, Counselor Hyatt, when I got here, I think we had like 40 reserves all over the place. That's very confusing even for staff, so we've merged a lot. There's probably a little bit more merging now that things have settled down a bit, and we'll, we'll definitely look at that going forward. Because by having, you're right, by having the working capital reserve for non-water, non-sewer stuff, a lot of the stuff can, and all the projects would just have to compete with that, but there are a few situations though where like the recreation facilities, that's basically the why, that one, you'd probably want to keep separate.
I think a lot of these were specific to that, to that purpose, Deputy Mayor Field, go ahead.
And just a comment, there, in past years, we did have a lot of different ones, but I think there's some benefit to like an election one where it's 7,500, we're putting 75 in, instead of one year when all of a sudden, you know, we're looking for $40,000 to run an election, the perception of it taking out of working capital, people can see that it's in there. You know, I, I think having things like the insurance, it's there, this is basically just some accounting. It's, it's not like we have a major hassle to, to have things allotted to the right group. So I, I think there is some benefit because people can see that there is money there for a specific item, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Field, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Charlebot, as far as sewage and waterworks, we cannot move those around. They have to be for that purpose.
Yeah, correct, your worship, yeah, yeah.
Counselor, oh, sorry.
I suggest to you also, Counselor Hyatt, that the, the library specific one is from the nickel funds, which are specific to the library, that must be spent on that building, so that's part of the reason, that's a separate account.
Mr. Charlebot, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, good discussion, we, we drastically reduced it almost eight years ago, maybe. We should, we haven't taken another hard look at it, so we'll take a hard look at it during '25. There's probably room for a little more efficiency there, but now that I'm looking a little closer at the list, there's not a lot, but we could, we'll look at that, see if we can streamline things a little more.
I can see, for example, maybe planning could be considered by council, maybe we don't need it for that, Counselor Patel?
Thank you, with the merging of some of these, does it benefit us on any level for grant applications by merging some of these things together? Are they still grant applicable individually even though they're merged or not?
Mr. Charlebot?
And now, to this point, no, that, that wouldn't help, they, they look at the F I R, the annual financial information return that we do, and that they look at our overall financial stability, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other questions from council, okay, Mr. Charlebot, carry on.
Next slide, please. CPI, so Consumer Price Index from 2018 to 2023, so the cumulative inflation is 21.2%. Now just, now it just compares our water rates over that same period, 13.6%. Next slide, please. Oops. There we go, that's why I was one slide ahead of you. So 2.3% for the, our tax rate from 2018 to 2023, I just talked about their water, the water rates there, yeah, that's the one. And then our last one is just comparing our sewer rates to the CPI. And, and the reason still in a, a negative there is because in '18 it went down 10%, and 2019 it went down 5%. We're doing for time.
We're okay.
We're good, okay. See, so next, we're going to talk about the water operations, capital and operating. Next slide, please. Yes, so for water, well, the projected revenue for 2025, using a 2.5% increase on the variable rate and increasing the fixed monthly portion to $15 per month is a $2.8 million revenue, and that's for water, we, as council knows, we sell about half our water to Innes Gellin, who passes on water to Dona Femia and Oil Springs, so that's included in that total revenue line. Our operating costs, 1.6 million, so our water treatment plants, the biggest cost we have, taking the water from the lake, treating it and pushing it all the way down here, our booster station, that's in between here and Wright's Grove, the water admin, collect, collection and equipment, 280,000, and then the water distribution, just over 300,000. So that gives us a net operating surplus of 1.2 million, and then we have our capital program. So for operator recommended capital, 178,000, and that's a breakout of the things we need to do next year, including 50,000 for unforeseen stuff, as like most of council's senior water. for unforeseen stuff. As like most of council's senior water treatment plan especially, a lot of technology there. There's always something going, funny, like give us Mike some flexibility there to react. Because we want to react quickly for, for water stuff. I think, do you want to mention anything all about the, the capital or?
I think we can review that when we go through the actual budget too, and that staff can speak to it.
Okay. The intake, and that's our by far largest project, not just in water, but across the municipality. So for next year, we're looking at expenditure of 3.7 million, less our green stream grant of 2.7 million. So for that grant, we're getting about 73% of our cost or, or reimbursed through a, a grant. And we're hoping to go, the R F P, Mike, what's the latest projection? I know it's in '25, by March or so, early, maybe earlier than that, maybe?
Yeah, they're, they're going to have the, the tender to us, I think, next week, December 5th, they said, last meeting we had. And then we can review it and have any comments, and then we'll have a little get-together before it goes over tender, but it's going to go for tender in January.
Okay, yeah, because we want to have the new, whoever's going to do the work picked before the season starts for them to work. Yeah.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Yeah. Uh, don't anticipate, we don't anticipate any loan. Sorry. And the bottom line is a transfer to the water reserve of $24,000. And don't anticipate any loans. The water reserve, as we saw a little earlier, just shy of 2 million at the end of 2023. Talked about the intake project and which got, got about another four to five years on, on that project. The, we had a request for a couple of pie graphs, and this here pie, this pie graph here, the first one is the revenue. So it shows our revenue, the rest from Petrolia, that's the variable portion there. And then the fixed portion is in orange, so blue and orange. And then the other big revenue is the other municipality, which is in, goes through Inneskellon, so that we get that money from Inneskellon. That's 1.1 million dollars. Okay, so that's the revenue. The next pie chart, there are all the expenditures. And like I said, the big cost is the water treatment plant, technology out there. And then the various other parts that we just spoke of, that doesn't include the capital. And then here's the capital on that last pie chart for water. And the two big chunks are the expenditures for the intake and then the revenue of 2.7 million. And it really makes the other stuff look small, but the other stuff is just, is, is very important to make sure we get that stuff done. The routine, more routine type capital. And that's that. And so we've done that for our three big chunks of the budget, water sewer and the town general stuff. And I'd appreciate any feedback in the next month or so from council just about, about these pie charts. It's the first time we've used, we used to use them a while back, but any feedback from council would be appreciated. We will feed that into our next year's budget process. And do we want to take a look at the detail for the water?
We can start. I just want to get back to this. I think that's probably a good idea that maybe next year we'll incorporate those, couple of those charts, just to make it kind of easy for council to, to see. That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Charlebot.
Your worship, you are at 9:54. If you wanted to take that break before getting into the detail?
We can do that. Why don't we break now? It's a 20-minute break. So we'll meet back here though at say quarter, quarter after 10. Is that okay? 10:15? So we'll break now until 10:15. Great. Thank you, everyone.
Off camera?
Yeah.
Do you like pie charts? You're going to love police board.